Good evening. Welcome to the January 22nd, 2019, meeting of the Mitchell Springs School District Board Directors. We begin every meeting with a flag, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright. We always start our meetings on a really fun note, and then at the end it's not as fun. But we're going to start the student presentation, and Director Martin Graham is going to do some introduction.
Minter Bridge Superstars in the house! Tonight's my pleasure to introduce students from Minter Bridge Elementary School's Dolphin Leadership Club. Dolphin Leadership is a group of fifty, fifth and sixth grade students who help around the school in a variety of ways. During kindergarten and first grade recess, Dolphin Leadership students help with problem solving. They also work one-on-one as buddies with students who have high needs. They assist with small groups in kindergarten through second grades, and they have presented in assemblies and planned school events. They also facilitated and organized the school's canned food drive, and they have planned a movie night in January. Tonight Dolphin Leadership students will share video testimonial from parents and perform a skit showcasing school character traits. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming the Dolphin Leadership Club.
I don't know where the video is. It is in the moment, okay? Okay.
When I came to Minter Bridge, I found out that there was not a leadership team, and I got an opportunity to help develop student potential. I think that leadership programs are a wonderful opportunity for kids to just raise the bar in how they think and what's expected of them. I decided that I wanted to just give it a shot, and was really surprised, pleasantly surprised, at the response that I received from our principal and from the students. I have seen a lot of positive effects from leadership team. I have seen students take ownership of our school and the way that they run. I've been really impressed with Minter Bridge's leadership group. My daughter comes home all the time really excited about what she's doing in leadership.
I enjoy leadership because I want a chance to have success.
I like leadership because I get a lot of encouragement.
One thing about leadership is that everybody's really nice and accepting about other people. And I like leadership because you can be other kid.
I like leadership because I can hang out with new people. It's such one of my things.
Something that I like about leadership is you get to go out on a basis, and you get to help a bunch of other little kids. And what you're doing is just helping lead other kids and spread kindness.
Leadership has affected Molly in so many ways. As a parent, I'm so proud of her, and her growth has been exponential.
Draven loves leadership. He comes back from school in leadership, when he knows of leadership, and he raises high.
I've seen leadership team have a huge effect at Minter Bridge. I've seen humans grow. I hope that Molly can feel like she can do anything. Not be afraid of a leadership role, because that can be scary, and especially for young girls and women, that can be difficult. So right now, when she's coming to that school, she feels fearless, and I want her to continue in that trajectory.
Another hope that I have is that our primary students will continue to adapt to our older students, and that they will look forward to the day that they too get to wear a leadership t-shirt and help around our school community.
Still need that she can be a part of that and inspiration for other kids, because as we all know, kids listen to the other kids, sometimes more than adults.
I like leadership because it breaks down.
I like leadership because if someone doesn't have a friend, they'll come over and play with you.
I like leadership because they help us not fight.
With the leadership, we only have to take advantage of others.
Buenos noches, Abby.
Good evening, Bella.
Sabías que en Puerto Minter Bridge tiene ocho rasgos de carácter.
No way, this sounds so cool! Could you show me what those character traits are?
Claro, déjame mostrarte un ejemplo de perseverance.
So lights, camera, action!
Ugh, I can't do this math test.
Si puedes, if you believe in yourself and don't give up, you could solve any problem.
I did the problem.
Gracias.
De nada. That's how you show perseverance.
Perseverance rocks!
Wow, did you see what Charlotte really persevered through that problem?
Sí, eso fue muy bueno.
So what's the next character trait?
El próximo rasgo de carácter es cooperación.
So lights, camera.
You're not doing it right!
Sí es.
No, you're not!
Tal vez si somos amables y cooperativos podemos hacerlo.
Building, building, building. Building. Building, still building. Thank you for the recommendation.
De nada.
Cooperation!
Okay, ¿lo entiendes ahora?
Yes, I thought that the skit really showed what cooperation is all about.
El próximo skit es sobre responsabilidad.
So lights, camera, action!
Es tu responsabilidad aceptar tarea, and I want it here on time, ten shots.
Okay. Ahora estoy en mi casa, no voy a jugar, no juego, no voy a ir con mis amigos a jugar. Voy a hacer mi tarea.
Eso es lo que quiero ahí.
Responsibility!
¿Sabes qué el próximo skit es sobre?
Wait, I think I know what the next skit is.
¿Qué crees que es?
Acceptance.
Wow, cómo lo supiste.
I don't know which skit is. So lights, camera, action!
Can I play?
No.
¿Por qué? It was acceptance year. Acceptance is when you let everyone play. Acceptance!
Acceptance. Wow, I just loved how Adie accepted happily. I thought it really showed what a leader looks like.
Okay, así que ahora es skit de pos-
Positivity! So lights, camera, action!
Come on, Adie, stop missing your passes!
I'm crying!
Come on, you're so bad!
Freeze! Elijah isn't being positive like Annie. Let's try again, see if we can do any better. I'm freeze.
Buen trabajo, casi lo hiciste.
Voy a tratar otra vez.
Good job, I knew you could do it.
Eso es lo que quiero ver.
Be positive!
Wow, eso fue lo más positivo que he visto.
Yeah, me too. Bella, why did nobody tell me about these awesome character traits?
Yo no sé, el próximo skit es sobre la excelencia.
So, lights, camera, action!
Este es un teatro sobre dos estudiantes jugando baloncesto. Luces, cámara y acción.
Otra quien va a jugar.
Vas a jugar contra Draven, pero va a ser un reto muy grande.
Vámonos.
Hi, this is Tana.
You must be Draven.
You're the best man when ready, set, go.
One point for Draven.
Ready, set, go.
Two points for Draven. One point for Tana.
Ready, set, go.
Good game.
Excelencia!
Wow, that was a very excellent skit!
¿Has aprendido algo?
Yes, but these are all very important character traits, and you should follow them too.
El último skit es sobre integrity.
So lights, camera, action!
Usted estaba corriendo como ya te dije que no corres. I'm taking away five years of year recess that you took away from us. No playing basketball! What did I tell you, ya te dije! That is not how you're supposed to show integrity. Showing integrity is when you do good things even though nobody's watching.
Integrity!
Those were the eight character traits of Minter Bridge. So that was the Minter Bridge Elementary School Leadership Pride skit. We all hoped you liked it.
Can you bunch up for a picture? This line is not conducive to photos. Multiple lines, I know you can figure it out, you're leaders. Wonderful, wonderful. Let's see some of those jazz hands from your character tray reveals. Woo, I like it, a little happier, one, two, three, woo! Alright, thank you. Thank you so much, Minter Bridge Elementary, that was amazing. We have another student recognition meeting, Director Cross is going to do some introduction.
The tradition of the Capitol Christmas tree, or the People's Tree, began in 1964 when Speaker of the House John L. Horvick placed a live Christmas tree on the Capitol lawn. Six years later, in 1970, the Capitol architect asked the U.S. Forest Service to provide a Christmas tree. Since then, a different national forest has been chosen each year to provide the People's Tree. In preparation, Oregon's National Forests have been selected twice since the program conception. The Unpan National Forest provided the tree in 2002, and the Willamette National Forest provided the tree this past December. In preparation for providing the 2018 tree, Governor Kate Brown held an essay contest, asking the fourth grade students to write letters about what they love about Oregon's outdoors for a chance to win a once-in-a-lifetime, all-expenses-paid trip to Washington, D.C. to take part in the tree lighting ceremony and attend festivities surrounding the tree lighting taking place throughout the Capitol. The contest was aimed at fourth graders because 2018 honors the 175th year anniversary of the Oregon Trail as well as the 50th anniversary of the National Trail System Act with the theme "Find Your Trail" and the three National Park passes offered to fourth graders. It seemed a natural fit. On Monday, October 15th, 2018, Jackson Elementary School's student, Jeanne Harrison, was surprised with the news that her essay had been selected from more than 1,200 submissions from around the state as the winner of the contest. In the weeks leading up to and including the tree lighting ceremony, she attended many events in Oregon and in Washington, D.C. with Governor Brown and other local and nationally-level elected officials. She is here tonight to share highlights of these events with us, so please join me in welcoming Jeanne Harrison.
Thank you all for inviting me tonight. I'd like to give a special shout-out to all the teachers that came. I'm going to be sharing a slideshow about my trip to Washington, D.C. and the whole experience of Capitol Christmas tree. Governor Kate Brown sponsored an essay contest for fourth graders across the state of Oregon. She announced a surprise visit to my classroom on October 16th. There was 1,200 entries. I found out the winning essay would like the United States Capitol Christmas tree on December 6th in Washington, D.C. Me and my class got to take many wonderful pictures, and I was given an ugly Christmas sweater, which was actually a jersey. It was from the Forest Service with number 25 on it. My poem was the original twist on the micro Christmas in format. I'll share one of my samples from my poem tonight. It featured my outdoor experience about Oregon throughout the season. It's currently on display in Governor Kate Brown's office. Before it was on display in Governor Kate Brown's office, it was on display in the Capitol. The Capitol Christmas tree program started in 1960, Oregon was selected twice, and the architect of the Capitol selects the tree each year. I think it's really cool that it's the first ever level park to stand on the Capitol's front lawn. Our special Oregon Christmas tree is 72 feet tall, 8,200 pounds, and around 40 years old. Please escorted the Capitol Christmas tree all the way from Oregon to Washington, D.C., the whole way through. The People's Tree travels. The tree followed the Oregon Trail in reverse back to Washington, D.C. The theme for this year was "Find Your Trail" in honor of the 175th anniversary of the Oregon Trail and the 50th anniversary of the National Trail System Act. The yellow line across the back is the route that the tree took from Oregon to D.C. It was a 100-foot long truck. It made 25 little stops along the way. It hit snow, but it had a built-in heater inside of its water so it wouldn't freeze. Sweet Home Oregon kicks off the celebration with a big parade, a festival, a program with Senator Wyden, Eric Metcalfe, and Alvin and the Digger Night. He gave beautiful ornaments to all the speakers who were speaking that night in the program. The People's Tree visits our Capitol Salem. I wrote my poem, "Friend of the Capitol," and got pictures of my family and friends with trees. It really does an amazing job. Smoky could bear photo bombs. We and Governor Kate Brown were trying to take a picture, but... I have special memories in Salem and Oregon City whistle stops. I have many new forest ranger friends. Me and my grandma got to put signatures onto the big banner, and I got four mini deathless birds to plant at my school and my house. It came from the Willamette National Forest, the same forest that the Capitol Christmas tree came from. The Oregon tree arrives in D.C. It arrived at Joint Base Andrews on November 25th. It used 60,000 LED lights, and the United States Air Force and the US Forest Service unrushed the tree with the U.S. Forest Service. The bait was put in the ground to cure the虫病. Wow, just wow. Imagine trying to put a 75-pound tree into a tree stand, that's a lot of work. This whole program is about bringing people and community together. 10,000 ornaments were made statewide for the tree. A 14-foot diameter tree skirt made in Yankton County, and about 75 additional smaller trees, one of the big tree, and were on display in D.C. That was successful, 500, 100, 75-inch tree skirts. The Oregon State Library donated fresh apples and two books to each whistle stop with the tree made along the Oregon Trail in reverse. I went back to Salem to light the rotated tree at the Capitol. On November 27th, me and the governor were invited to do a skit, and then it ended with Santa coming out of the doors and getting photos. It was time to travel, I was DC'd out. A fun surprise was Alaska Airlines arranged for me to speak on the intercom during the flight. It's still about the Capitol Christmas tree. It was so fun. Also, I was featured in the in-flight magazine. On my first day there, visiting the White House was really, really amazing. We got to see the Hall of Red Christmas Trees and lots of good spots to take family photos. There was a National Press Club reception. I performed and sang on my violin. Also, I met Chuck LaBelle from the Rolling Stones, keyboardist and singer. There was a Library of Congress Congressional Reception. I got to meet Senator Merkley and Senator Wyden. Later that day, Senator Wyden had tweeted about how fun it was so much, how so much fun it was to meet me, and I really enjoyed speaking and reading my poem with him. We went to the Library of Congress and saw President Jefferson's original book collection, The Great Hall, and many more. We took a deep study of museums. From these skeletons to elephants to the Statue of Liberty made out of Legos and to even losing its tears in the cafeteria. These museums were really, really amazing. There was an amazing butterfly exhibit. There was one butterfly that must have liked my butterfly headband. My dad said, and my grandma said. Finally, they took it off from the special brush and they had to leave it there. We went to Capitol Hill and took a sneak peek at the Capitol tree. It was decorated with ornaments kindergarten through high school. It was not closed in person. To the left were the official ornaments of 2018, and to the right, the Capitol tree was all decorated with thousands of Oregon-made ornaments kindergarten through adult. Capitol Hill was beautiful and majestic. Me and my family got to walk along the side to get personal tours, and we got to take lots of pictures. There was a monument dusted tour that was beautiful and meaningful. There was the Markus Sherkin Jr. Monument, the Lincoln Monument, and many more. We went to the Secretary of Agriculture, the USDA reception. Meeting the United States Secretary of Agriculture, Sandy Padoo, and lighting the USDA Christmas tree was awesome. I got to read my poem, and then we did the countdown, and we lit the tree. We went to the House of Representatives and met Suzanne Vonnegut. She talked with our family for an hour about education. We met Speaker of the House Paul Ryan. He invited us over to his personal suite for a Christmas party right before the tree lighting. I gave him an Oregon ornament to put on his tree. He did not have a star on top of his tree, but cheese, because he was from Wisconsin. It was time to light the big tree. I was reciting my poem on national television and then the countdown from five to one. There was a congressional after-party at the Botanical Gardens with Nikki Swanson, head ranger of the Sweet Home District, and I got to speak with John Ryden and Suzanne Vonnegut. It was a surprise. The next morning, a featured page on the article of the Metro section of the Washington Post. There's so many memories, I am so grateful for this experience and opportunity. Next step will be I am working very hard to publish my poem into a children's picture book. I'm going to be doing an opening ceremony for the House of Representatives in Salem, and I'm going to be speaking in the Governor's address in April. So I'm going to close by reading my poem. "Was the month before Christmas, in all through my mind swirl thoughts of my Oregon all intertwined. The four seasons, how extraordinary, each one of a kind, left memories galore for my mind to rewind. The winter, how beautiful, the snow began to fall. I quickly grabbed my mittens to make a chilly snowball. The snowman we created stopped proudly on my yard. He stayed there till he melted, a snowy, frosty garden. The raindrops, how they pattered, the wind gusts, how they blew. In Oregon, this is common, it makes us special through and through. So don't be disappointed, for rain can bring such joy. The puddles are presumptive, they're better than a toad. In thinking of the springtime, birds began to chime, the tulips and the daffodils made for a colorful time. It was time to plant my garden, the seeds were in the ground. I watched each day as plants popped up and roots decayed back. The roses, oh so pretty, a painting of delight. The picture of a rainbow, magical and bright. A visit to the Oregon coast is sure to bring a smile. Watching waves from seagulls fly up high, my sandcastle took a while. Flying kites, their tails soaring, a fun sight to behold. Especially nice upon the sand, the ocean foamy and cold. On to summer sunny days, the earth was in its glory, picking berries, apples, peaches, and more, so sweet like a fairy tale story. Hiking in the green lush forests, tall evergreens abound, watching wildlife, deer and elk appear, animals all around. Kayaking on our rivers was great, it really was a thrill. Pedaling to and fro with dead water rippling, peaceful yet still. Time for fall, it was really here, really a trees ablaze, leaves soon fell down, one by one, my eyes just looked to gaze. Finally, into the pumpkin patch, oh which one should I choose? A tall, around, skinny one, once carved, it would amuse. It's time to cut our Christmas tree, you've got to find the right one. Can't wait to get it home inside, all decorated and done. So as I closed my eyes for sleep, my heart holds memories dear, thinking of my home, our state, my Oregon, how glad I am."
I think I would like to have everybody who came here for the express purpose of listening to Bridget's speech or family members, please come up and join her for a minute.
Yeah, yeah, come on!
I thought I explained the prayer. So, teachers of Bridget, what grade?
Kindergarten.
Fourth grade.
Please go.
Librarians here, too, librarians. Bunch up! Come on, don't hide anyone back. Alright, ready? One, two, three, one more distinct case. Bridget, before you go, I just want you to know that all of us up here are very impressed, and you make us feel like we should really be doing more with our lives. Thank you so much for sharing. So we now come to item E3, board recognition and appreciation. Supremed for the next stop.
All right, thank you. Fourth grade, I was just worried about what kickball team I was going to be on. Thinking about either that stuff, so impressive. And as we all know, it is Board Appreciation Month. And I'd just like to take a minute to thank the board for everything they do, the number of school visits they could do, the amount of advocacy they could do on behalf of our students and with the legislature, the way you dive into, learn about issues and learn about programs that we have. Just absolutely impressive. And just personally, I'd like to thank you for all the time that you put in, all of the... Just the effort that you use diving in to learn everything you can to make the best decisions possible for our students. So much appreciated. We do have a tradition where we also read a proclamation into the record, so I'll go ahead and read that now. Whereas school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do, and school boards establish clear standards for student performance, and school boards ensure that student assessments are highly established standards, and school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement, and school boards align school district resources to ensure that students meet standards, and school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels, and school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability. And school boards are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. We hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors and proclaim the month of January 2019 to be school board recognition. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members in preparing today's students for tomorrow's work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we will just move right along. So we're at item C, approval of agenda, which means that we need a motion.
I move the agenda as written.
Second. It was been moved by Martin and seconded by Erica that we approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? So it's been moved by Martin and seconded by Erica that we approve the agenda as printed. If you would like to approve the agenda as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. The agenda is approved. Thank you. Next, in the audience, do you have any audience cards? So we reserve a portion of our meeting to hear from the audience or community members. If you'd like to share thoughts with us, there's a card in the back of the room that you can fill out, a request to speak card, and you can turn it into that last one. Okay, thank you. All right, reports and discussion. This is very exciting. First reading of the school calendar.
Drum roll or something like that. So before you, you have a draft of the first reading of the 2019-20 school year calendar. And per policy IC, the school calendar requires that the calendar be approved no later than the April school board meeting. And so this calendar is proposed with start dates that would start after the Labor Day holiday. And it also includes key dates and vacation periods to assist families and staff as they plan for the upcoming year. Some of the key differences from the 2018-19 calendar is that the sequence of grade preparation days at the end of the first semester, typically, we finish on a Wednesday at the end of that grading quarter, and then the next day becomes teacher prep, followed by grade prep typically. And so with feedback from secondary staff and a particular high school, we made that change to move it to a Thursday to be the end of the semester, and then grade prep, followed by Monday to be the teacher prep. And the key purpose for this change was that we received feedback from registrars and school counselors at the high school level that when it came to juggling and moving students into class to have them seamlessly start their second semester, this time of the teacher prep day on a Monday allows for that to take place so the kids can start school in their new classes on that Tuesday. So that's something I just wanted to point out. And then in the November staff development, we received feedback that if we could align elementary and secondary professional development to the October date, and so that will fall on that Thursday with our non-school contract date for license on that Friday. And then, this is something that I know that is going to be... We've had dialogue previously about Thanksgiving break and the Wednesday before, and we had some feedback previously around that. One of the things that we had to think about was the bond work that was coming in the summer, and when we'd be able to start those things, as well as our summer programs that include our migrant summer school, dual language, and the extended programs for school. So if you look at the calendar, we'll have our last day on a Thursday with the last day for teachers on a Friday, which would allow us to then start our bond work close to right after that. And so that was something that we had to keep in mind. We have a lot of projects that are coming up in that next year, and we need to be mindful of that piece as well. Some of the key features around the winter break would be that we would be following something that mirrors what we had this year. So we will have winter break that will come after... Start on the 23rd and go through January 3rd. So similar to what we had this year. And then spring break will follow that last full week in March. I want you to be mindful of the fact that we had to reflect a calendar that has a 191-day contract for licensed employees. We wanted to balance those instructional days across each semester and make sure that we were outlining seat time requirements. So those are the key pieces that I wanted to share with you. And we also have in our situation page just a historical observation of where Labor Day fell, and then so you have an understanding of kind of what that would look like, and it goes out all the way through 2021. So the recommendation is that the board review the first reading of this proposed 2019-20 calendar and provide feedback or any questions that you may have for me tonight.
Thanks. Any questions or feedback of the calendar?
I'm not seeing any. We definitely appreciate the board. We know it's been quite an endeavor with the last several years to get a model that works. And hopefully, we have found it maybe, maybe not. We'll see. But we definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. There we go. It's not like the buttons are broken, right? It's not... You guys didn't have... All right, all right. Just want to make sure. Make sure there's no comments. Don't worry. Okay. Item 2, announce school board election process finally with Beth. Beth Fraser.
Really?
Yeah. Go for it.
So we do have three positions that are coming open on our board this year. And so those are positions 4, 5, and 7. And I believe the filing date is going to open... The ability to register that says that you want to file as a candidate opens on the 10th.
The 9th is a Saturday, so it's early P.M.
And goes through March. We're going to have a couple of different prospective board member learning opportunities. One is going to be a lunch session, and the other is going to be a coffee meeting. So those are in your packet. Sorry, I'm totally getting ready for the strategic plan update. I forgot that I was on the schedule for this. So anyway, you can see all the info in your packet. Do you have questions?
Thank you, Beth. So we have some questions and comments. Tanner and Martin.
First question, would you like board members to attend? In the past, we've attended those kind of open houses to answer questions and provide feedback. As the board members, if they wanted to sign up, to contact you?
Yes.
This is the place... Jill is just making faces at me. This is the place where I announced that I am not seeking reelection. And so my position would be position 4, I think. Yeah, thank you. Don't make me cry. All right, no?
Okay. I would be seeking reelection for my position, position 5. That's news to anyone, but I hereby formally announce. Is there any other comments or questions?
I should add that I'm also going to be running for election. So I was appointed to this seat, and I will be running to keep the seat for the next four years.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Travis, Division 22 assurances.
Thank you very much. Each year, the Oregon Department of Education requires that we report to the community regarding our standing in Division 22 standards for public elementary and secondary schools. So each year, it's my responsibility to review that we are in compliance with those OARs and assure that the district is in compliance with standards across our different departments and functions. It's also my responsibility to identify areas found to be out of compliance and provide a plan for bringing those areas into compliance. And as in former years, I would notify our community and the board that we continue to be out of compliance with the seven-year cycle recommended by the Oregon Department of Education for adoption of curriculum across content areas. I think the board is well informed on this topic, and we continue to advocate for funding for curriculum adoption in that cycle. We will be submitting the form to waive the requirement to do so. We submitted that form last year, and we received no response. So we assume that we have been granted the waiver. Also, I just wanted to note that we rely on our community to advise us when they believe that we are out of compliance with the requirements of the law or our public notification system. And this year, we actually had a helpful patron alert us to the fact that we had a broken link on our website that was the portal to our complaint process. Beth and her team fixed that broken link. And so we have our complaint process easily accessible on our website, which is a requirement of that Division 22-23-70. And so we appreciate the fact that at times, something's not available, and a community member will advise us of that, whether that's a teacher, or a parent, or a student. And so we are in compliance with our complaint procedures this year. Happy to answer any questions about Division 22 compliance.
Well, we get the detail... Sometimes the report will actually indicate those cycles and how far out we are of compliance.
Yep.
Does that exist, and I'm not seeing it, or...
You're not seeing it because I haven't shared it in the packet, but I'm happy to share that with the board. In the waiver form, we line out which curriculum areas are up to speed and which ones are how many years out from being on that seven-year cycle. And I'm happy to provide that for the board.
I just think it's really important that people understand how far out of cycle so many curriculums are, content areas. And it's a good reminder about QEM that QEM would provide for there to be beyond cycle.
Yes.
So that kids have books that are appropriate and modern. And so I think for us, as we meet with legislators and continue to talk about budget and curriculum cycles, knowing how far some of those are, those would be probably great tracking points for us.
Yep.
Exactly how once it bends into a social study.
Since a social study, yep. I'm happy to report that we are in the middle of a language arts adoption K-12, and that will include books, and digital licenses, and apps, and, you know, the curriculum that our students deserve. And we continue to advocate for stable and adequate funding. We also would prioritize curriculum investment were we to get closer to QEM in terms of state funding. So appreciate the board's advocacy for that.
And I appreciate how creative we've been about how to utilize the resources that we do have, how we... The multi-year approach to solving things has been effective. But it's... I think it's my shock when we see that list. Some of those books are from when some of us were in high school, which is a lot longer than others that were in high school. And so I just... It's a really important thing for me.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Erica Lopez is younger than I am. In case you want to put that in the Division 22 report.
I'll add that.
Thanks, Travis. Strategic Plan Goals Update. Mike is going to introduce, and then we'll go to Beth.
So over the years, we have tried a variety of different ways to present and keep you updated regarding our progress on the strategic plan for any given year. And we've gone through a number of processes, including one where we used to have... I would do a lengthy overview, and each cabinet member would speak for a long time in great detail about the progress we made. And then we noticed that the eyes of the board members were glazing over each time we did that. And so we're now at a spot where we feel like we have the right balance here. Over the years, we refined our strategic plan so that we're reporting on just a few things so that you can absorb that a little better. And then we've also landed on this current process where Beth gathers information, and she presents in a succinct manner. So with that, we'll let Beth do her presentation.
Oh, yep. So as I was just kind of going through here, I was realizing that there's still a lot of acronyms going on in here, so there may be some things that weren't entirely clear. So I try to do my best to explain those as we go, and I'll go back into this document as well and make sure that those are spelled out so that people aren't just scratching their heads. So our first SMART goal is all around getting some additional training conducted around how to use the new system that's been built into our student information system to capture name, strength, and need data. And you see that there's been a counselor work group that's been working and meeting on this topic and developing some screening tools to assist students with those social emotional aspects of knowing every student by name, strength, and need, which I think is great. Of course, this isn't exhaustive of all the work that's happening. It's just some highlights to kind of let you know that we're continuing our work in this area. The second goal is around increasing the number of students who are participating in career-related internships. And here's where we have some acronyms going on. ELO is not Electric Light Orchestra, as you may have thought. It is Experiential Learning Opportunity, and a CURI is a Career-Related Learning Experience. So I can spell some of those out. But, you know, this is an area where we've got Brooke at the helm, and she definitely rocks it, along with Hillsborough Chamber. They make sure that there are a lot of engaging opportunities for students to participate in, as well as getting together some of our business and community folks who are in those various career learning areas to kind of consult and manage the flow of opportunities and what we're offering in our school programs. Number three is around trauma-informed practices, specifically with classified staff. And we have been hitting that topic hard every chance we get, both with kind of the ongoing built-in opportunities of folks in the schools, as well as things like summits. And we have another classified summit coming up on the 31st, which is a no-scope conference if they end the semester. So one of their opportunities will be around trauma-informed care. We'll learn about that. And number four is increasing the number of students on track to graduate in ninth grade, particularly our historically underserved students. And you'll see that a number of one-on-one mentoring sessions have taken place at all of our high schools with some special focus being put on students who have already been identified through our system as in need of some initial supports. And then increasing our math scores by 3% overall and 5% again for historically, for certain groups. And we've got some programs in place, STAR and IREDDY, in our elementary schools that allow for some kind of pulse checking of how students are doing at any given time, which really allows for kind of that real-time course correction by the teacher to ensure that students are getting what they need and are absorbing the content. And there's additional resources available on our kind of our intranet teaching and learning site. And then finally, we have increasing the number of highly effective instructional strategies. And we do have a new evaluation tool that's in line with the five dimensions of teaching and learning, which we've been focusing on for the last several years. And our building administrators have been collaborating to share best practices around some different tools that they can use to do walkthroughs that make that whole process easier. You know, we have charged our administrators with doing 500 classroom observations in a year, which is very aggressive. And so having those streamlined tools to assist them in doing that is very useful. That's just a very quick overview of what's in here. But if there are questions, I or Travis can answer those.
Any questions or comments for Beth?
All right, my question, Mike. The classified summit, could board members attend? And it's January 31st, the last one during this school year, or what about being in that?
Research, yeah. I think the answer to the first part would be yes. And I'll have to figure out if there's another one. So an appropriate channel... So an appropriate channel would be to let Val know, and then send an invite to you all.
For members who have event-led training, trauma-informed care, I'm assuming that would be a great way to kind of get a review. I've mentioned some elementary ones to other organizations, and they're really great. I'm just not going to call them 31st, so I would love to share.
Thank you.
If there's another opportunity to plug in.
Yep, notify you. Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. I just had a question about the status when we put on here that it's in progress, but a lot of them are like measurable, the percentages that we're trying to track. Is there a way to get like an actual data of the progress?
Yeah, not for the smarter balanced assessment related ones, but give me an example, maybe of one that you, we're thinking like the internship data, how many to date?
Even like goals, like for example, says train 100% secondary. So like, how far are we? Are we at 50%? Or is it so that we can kind of gauge where our progress is?
Okay. Yes.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, we really appreciate your work on this. Thanks, you very much. Financial Report with Michelle Morrison. Do you want to give us highlights? Do you want to just take questions?
I, the information is in the packet, and I'm happy to answer your questions I can, or get additional information to you.
Any questions or comments for Michelle about the financial report? Okay. No, a question just comes up, so it's not a question. The reason we don't have any questions is because Michelle's report is so thorough, and so we appreciate that very much. If you want to read it, it is in our publicly posted packet in the early 20s. Okay. Policies for First Reading. So Travis, you have the first step.
Yeah. FFS. Thank you. This is a recommendation that came from Board Vice Chair Erica Lopez, that we reconsider the name of the formerly known as Citizens Curriculum Advisory Committee, and rename the committee the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee. So what you have in front of you are drafts of the policy IFF, and then the AR, which formerly did not include a third document, which is known as the CCAC Charge or Press. And Val helped us take these documents to the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee in our last meeting, review the recommendations. We touched up some of the details that have changed about the time of year that we appoint those folks, the process that we use to appoint them. And so you have in front of you all the proposed revisions, which have been approved unanimously by the CCAC membership itself. And I, as their secretary, bring these proposed changes forward to you, the board, who can take action on making these adjustments to the policy, the AR, and then adding the charge to the AR, so that it's publicly available to anybody who searches for the policy and the AR. It used to live only on the site of the CCAC itself, the charge did. So with your approval, we would make these changes to the policy, the AR, including adding the charge.
Thank you. Jackie?
Is the, so the charge is not policy, it's just an additional document?
In our understanding, this document clarified the role of the committee, which is to advise the board on program development and curriculum essentially. And so it, our proposal is that it live as part of the AR, rather than as a document that's a one-off from our normal sets of policies and rules.
Is it something that instead of being in, I mean, in policy or AR, that it can be in the handbook, like a job description, or a, I'm just, I just don't know if, is that appropriate to put it in policy and AR? That's my only question.
We thought the value would be clarifying the role and the purpose of the committee, and kind of how it is constituted and how it runs, just so that folks who wanted to participate would have that available to them more easily than looking in another location.
Do we have other committees and ARs and policies like this?
Jackie, we do have other, we do have, we do have other appendices.
Okay.
But the reason, the other reason is as we were looking at this, it says in the AR that the board has to approve the charge, and we thought that way would be a way to make sure that the board does that, and kind of do that and keep it up to make a way down.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions about? Thank you, Travis.
Thanks for the recommendation. I'll share with the committee that will still be known as the CCAC. Try to practice the new first word.
Yeah. I'm really excited, because this is a really good change, so it's just going to be great.
You too, thanks.
Okay, we're at the first reading of Policies in Section D, Fiscal Management, with Michelle Morrison. You have about a million policies, so you just, however you want.
I do, I just, specifically the first one, D8, Fiscal Management Goals, those recommendations are deleted, does not mean we're deleting our fiscal management program, just wanted to assure you. It's already outlined as part of both of our budget documents and our financial report that we give at families, those are things that really agree with us all the time. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the policies.
If you guys have a second to scroll, if you come across a question that you've noted, just push your button. Mark?
Duh, deletions are just that, the recommendation was P8.
I don't see any other comments or questions at this time. Michelle, if you can give us another second question, we have a lot to go through. And I need to find my place for the next section, so. I'm getting close. All right, we're going to go now to Section F, Facilities, with Casey. Casey, do you have any highlights you want to explain or share with us, or just take questions?
No, yeah, just any questions, very similar, I mean, recommended, these are recommended policies for deletion, or a few updates, part of our process with OSBA.
Questions or concerns for Casey for Section F?
More of a question from Mike or Val, like, a lot of deletions. I remember OSBA saying we had way too many, are we getting closer? It's a long process of reach.
I'm going to read it to you.
We're generally accepting the recommendations, and as far as we are deleting and incorporating what I've lived on through, sections A, B, C, D, and F is what's come to you guys, and some security ones, and we've got about 40. Fewer.
Thanks.
Excellent. All right, move on to Item F, Information AR Updates, with Mike, Beth, and Casey.
Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Some of those ARs that are deleted have been incorporated into the policy. Strategic Plan is on the website. Any questions that you'd like to answer?
Are any, oh, sorry. Are any of these ARs ones that are board-adopted ARs that we need to move on at a later meeting, or not?
Not on the information section.
Then that brings us to our consent agenda. I will leave on our meeting this evening, and I know that we're going to pull someone off, Jackie?
Yes, I request that we pull off Policy CHA, Development of Administrative Regulations.
Yes, thank you very much.
To correct some wording.
Great. And we don't have to vote on that. That sounds good. Is there any other issues about consent agenda before I look for a motion? Okay, so then I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda as amended.
I move that we amend consent agenda as amended.
Second. So it's been moved by Erica, and seconded by Kim, that we approve our consent agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Okay, so it's been moved by Erica, and seconded by Kim, that we approve our consent agenda as amended. If you would like to do so, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, consent agenda passes, it's approved. Excellent. So we'll move on to Item H, Action Items, and then we'll discuss CHA, I guess there, Val, or should we discuss it now? Let's make things clear separately. Where is the best place to do that?
You know, we would do it separately. I don't know that there's the best place. I would say it's probably the action.
Okay, so we'll just stick it there under, actually, do it first, so that we can keep a favor tone. Okay, so then, let's talk about CHA. Jackie, would you want to make a motion to amend that?
I move that we approve Policy CHA with the following correction. Add the word regulation to the highlighted text in the second line of support paragraph of policy so it reads, "The board reserves the right to review any administrative regulation and may revise it if, in the board's judgment, it finds such an administrative regulation is not consistent with the adopted policy and/or other administrative regulations." It was just, it was missing the word regulation.
So Jackie would like to move to amend Policy CHA and add the word regulation. Does she have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion to amend Policy CHA and add the word regulation, as moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim. If you would like to add the word regulation to Policy CHA, as Jackie has moved and Kim has seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we need a motion to approve the amended Policy CHA.
Well, you made a motion to amend it. Now, when you amend it, you also have to approve it. It becomes very.
Okay, I move that we approve the amended Policy CHA as a second.
Okay, it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim, that we approve amended Policy CHA. Is there any discussion? Okay, if you would like to approve the amended Policy CHA, as moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. All right. Okay, fantastic. So now we are at our action items for the evening, or other action items, the resolutions. If you can find those on page 227 of our packet. We're starting with the resolution to support increasing Oregon public school funding to ensure student success.
Sorry, Madam Chair, my.
That's why I'm taking a pause really slow.
Oh, I move that the board of directors approve the resolution to support increasing Oregon public school funding to ensure student success. Second.
So it's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim. Val, do I read the resolution before we vote, or after? I'm sorry. You should.
You do not have to read that resolution.
Oh, you can say, I'm supposed to do that. Fantastic. Okay, so it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim, that we vote on the resolution to support increasing Oregon public school funding to ensure student success, as printed in our packet. Is there any discussion? Kim?
Yeah, I just, for our teacher partners, or in the audience, we met last week with Washington County legislators, who represent us in Salem, both senators and representatives. And part of our plea to them in this work is that we too are elected officials, and we're ready to stand elbow-to-elbow with them and do this really, really hard work. And so as we work on this, just the same message to all staff members, that we're ready to be elbow-to-elbow and spend a lot of time in Salem, we guess. We have to finish this by June 30th, that's when my term is over. So no pressure to anyone.
No pressure. All right, thank you, Kim. So it's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim, that we vote yes on this resolution to support increasing Oregon public school funding to ensure student success. If you would like to approve that resolution, as moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. That resolution passes. And then we have a second resolution as well. Item two, vote on resolution in support of funding education at the level recommended by the quality education model.
Yep, I move that the board of directors approve the resolution in support of funding education at the level recommended by the quality education model.
Second. It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Yedira, that we vote on the resolution in support of funding education at the level recommended by the quality education model, which is printed in our packet. Is there any discussion, Kim?
Sorry, I have a lot to say tonight. Being a long timer, there were so many years that we could not use the word QEM in this room, that there were board members who wouldn't even say that word out loud, because it seemed so ridiculously far away, not attainable, and it was accepted. And I was just so excited that not only were we not afraid to say that word, but ready to go for it. It's just a very different, exciting time in Oregon and Salisbury, and it's a little bit natural. That's all I want to say.
I'd just like to encourage everyone in the audience, this is a product that Beth worked with a lot of us on to get it going. We're going to get from the red dot to the green dot. The green dot's QEM, and I know a lot of our partners in the audience are definitely on board, and Full Court Press down in Salem. It really comes down to 91 people, 60 representatives, one was here earlier this evening, big fan, and 30 senators, and one governor. And we're going to get the message to them. If Janine were here speaking, she'd say, even though people are on board, they still have to hear it. So pledge Janine with emails, even though she's completely on board, and Susan. I did have a conversation with one state senator who really thought it was going to be hard to get to QEM. It was a little disappointing. So this is somebody that is a good, big fan of K-12, and really thought, as of yesterday, at coffee, that QEM was going to be too hard to achieve. So here we are, we're contemplating, you know, going for QEM. I think we need to. I think the community needs to let it be known to their legislators that priority for this session is K-12, you know, and getting our kids ready for success. And that may be a little bit more than K-12, but maybe some early pre-K stuff, maybe some mental health stuff, that's all good, that's all part of it. Definitely let them know that that's what we expect from them, and that's what we need from them. And there's some strategy about, you know, in sort of shorthand, we call it swinging for the fences, or being more measured. And I think that's what this particular senator was saying, being more measured is something that's doable, you know, like maybe somewhere around the blue dot, which would be good news, but it's not QEM. I think the time is now to actually go for QEM. This particular senator shared with me that he felt that whatever came out of the legislature was ultimately going to wind up on the ballot one way or another. Well, if we're going to do all that, let's make sure it's a whole run, it gets the job done, that when the legislature's done and the voters have spoken, that we're at QEM, not some neither here nor there place, that really still begs the question, how are we going to solve K-12 funding? I think we need to swing for the fence, get QEM before the voters, if that's what it takes, and then have a good piece of legislation that passes muster, you know, at the ballot box. So that's where I am. That's my pitch I give to everybody that saw me coffee who will listen, which is quite a few people. And I know my colleagues are all on board, our partners in the audience are all on board, so here we go. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, any other thoughts? Okay, it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Yedira, that we vote on the resolution in support of funding education at the level recommended by the quality education model, as printed in our packet. If you would like to vote to support that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, that resolution also passes. Hooray. Okay, well, okay, here we are. So now we're at the end of our meeting. Great. So HCU and HGA boards, we would love to welcome you down to hear from you.
I guess just tonight, I wanted to talk about the idea that a door is not just a door, it's a promise of security, it is separation, it is focus. Out in West Union, we had a lunch folks come to me and say, we really need a locked door in the kitchen area, because we have students who come down, they're little, they're not really focusing on their work, and it's going to cause havoc in the lunchroom. And I think through a lot of conversation with the principal, with Casey and the facility department, we actually were able to get a set of doors. And you might think, oh, it's not that big of a deal, but for that kitchen manager, a door was more than just a single door, it allowed them to actually do their work, to make sure that they can feed the students, and that they weren't losing time due to a student who is dysregional. I know that, you know, a lot of our facilities folks have gone out and built walls, and built doors in some of our buildings. and built doors in some of our buildings, and it makes a difference. And having adequate facilities for our folks to work in, having space for them to where they're separated from each other is really important. And I really want to thank all the folks at facilities who make sure that our buildings work every day. I know we've been struggling with heat in some buildings in the winter and we have old systems, but they're out there every day trying to make a difference. And they have, you know, I know our HVAC guy, he keeps, you know, saying that he has 100 tickets. There's hundreds of places that need help. And I'm just very thankful that they're willing to put in the time to show up early every, you know, where all the schools open, to do their best to make sure that our kids have enough heat that they're able to focus on education. And, you know, it makes a difference, and having those folks there. So I just wanted to shout out to them and shout out to the facility group that they do a wonderful job without a whole lot of people in the district. So, thank you.
Okay, three quick things. First, Jill Laine, President, Hillsborough Education Association. And, you know, I'm proud to represent over 200 Hillsborough's licensed staff. And I really wanted to just take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you from the HSD Board of Directors for passing the resolution, which calls for increased state funding for public education. As your vote indicates, Oregonians representing multiple perspectives recognize that now is the time. Now is the time to stop the endless cycle of underfunding our system, our educational system. Your vote tonight means that HEA and HSD can work together from a new place of coordinated strength to secure what our students so desperately need, adequate and stable funding. So, you know, I've invited you, I know already, to join me in Salem on February 18th. And it sounds like a lot of people here in the room who I attend, which really makes me happy and I'm very excited. I truly believe that we can make a difference. Secondly, I do want to say, it was so nice to see Bridget Harrington this evening. Her mom and dad are friends of mine. I actually taught, Kim Harrington was my teaching partner, before I took on this position as president. And it's just wonderful to see, I've never noticed since she was alone, to see her grow. And like Lisa and Mike, like you said, wow, that's not what I was thinking about. I had the opportunity last week to go to Miller, to the big picture, and watch a student with her exhibition. And if you have not had that opportunity, I highly recommend that you go because I had the same emotions last week when I left after listening to this young lady for approximately an hour, share her story and where she's at in that particular setting. And she shared things like being part of labor robotics and having internships with Representative Solomon, making 200 phone calls a day that last week, you know, getting off the boat. She shared a story about having a phone conversation with an older woman who is in her 80s that wanted to vote, had voted, but didn't know how to get her ballot, you know, where it needed to be, and volunteered to go get it so that she could have a vote counted. Volunteers in the elementary classroom and shared a story about how she was able to help a student make a difference in the student's life, who really struggled to complete assignments and just volunteering and networking with this young woman who's able to really make some changes. And teachers like, "Wow, she's actually doing the work she's doing. She's doing the assignments. I don't know what you said, but thank you." It just went on. She's doing research right now on traumatic care and trauma-informed care. She's reading a novel. And at the end of the time I spent with her last week, she's like, "And you know, I've got to get going because there's something going on over at Tobias and I want to be over there." So I walked out of there too feeling like, "Wow, I don't do enough." I mean, I thought I was doing a lot. I don't do enough. This young woman, you know, maybe Danny for president, I don't know. But it was pretty amazing. So if you haven't had the opportunity to get over there and spend some time to see what they're really doing and making some significant changes in some children's lives, I really encourage you to do so. And then finally, I want to welcome up future leaders, HSA leaders, Joe Vermeer and Joanne Ponry, because we do have something, a little something for the school board members in honor of January, the school board appreciation. And if you know Joe at all, he's an avid reader. Joe had the charge of selecting the. So he has selected books that he thinks will, are worthwhile reads and things that you might want to share in this. We look forward to Dr. Susan Marsh, there's a couple children's books that you might want to share. Thank you for all that you do. We really appreciate you and we're really excited to work with you as we head down to Salem on February 18th. Thank you.
Thank you!
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. We will move to item J, discussion time, and we'll start with the student recs. Samantha?
I don't have anything to share. I just want to say a quick thank you again, just in kind of a special sense and I, is to get this opportunity to be on the school board. And since it is, I mean, school board appreciation month, I really just wanted to really say, like, thank you for this opportunity. I know this has been in the works for a while. And getting the opportunity to be here for the very first year and to experience it all, it's been an incredible thing that I cannot even really put into words of how thankful I am for this. And that even while I was on the school board, in my freshman year, coming into a public school, from a prior school, I never thought anything of the school board. And hearing and seeing the first hand the work you guys do is insane. In some sense, I don't even understand what you guys do it, but I just want to say thank you from me and all of Century.
Wow, thank you for. Oh, wait, I'm so sorry. I was giving Mike, I'm sorry. I had to see the wrong order. We should fix this order, I think, but.
You sit in the wrong place.
No, it's okay. Go, Mike.
All right, thanks. So Jessica, it's funny, you never even thought about school boards. It's all I think about. Sorry, Mike. I would, three things I want to talk about just really briefly tonight. First of all is I want to thank a couple of our partners that are here, HEA and HCU. Con and I have had the opportunity to meet in the last couple of weeks with both groups, and it just reminds me of the productive partnership that we have with both groups. I too am going to be attending the rally on President's Day. Sarah and Jill have promised that we won't get arrested, so. And if it happens, it won't happen.
You're the only ones that can fire you. We're going to be there.
Okay, good. So anyway, thank you for your partnership. We do appreciate it. We don't always agree on everything, but we do agree that we need to do more for our students. And I really hope that this legislative session gives us that opportunity. Second thing, I was reminded over the last couple of weeks as we prepared for a number of big events, just the how hard our staff works. Oftentimes, if you are a principal, if you're a teacher, you get some of those kudos at the building level. If you work here, you guys get nothing. So in terms of kudos from students and thanks. And so I do appreciate our entire team that prepares for these meetings as well as helps set direction for the district. So thanks to all of you for that. And finally, because all I do think about is school boards. And it is school board recognition month, and we did do the proclamation earlier, but truly, it is a privilege to work with you folks. The amount of time that you take advocating for our kids, the amount of time you spend with our legislators, both locally, and Kim is going to be headed out to do that at the federal level as well, is just incredible. And the passion that you have for making positive changes to our system really makes a difference for us and for our students. So thanks for all of you.
You sure? I'm pretty sure. Okay, it's Jackie's turn. Go first.
I, the best part about this month and being on the school board are, and I'm sure everybody here will agree, are the handwritten notes from the kids and the pictures. And I still have the one letter from last year. It's all framed. I mean, it just, it touches my heart. It's just, because I know how hard they work on this. I appreciate that. Had an opportunity the last couple of weeks to go to Buttercup Creek and interview five third graders. I have to say, you know, when you're being interviewed, you cannot compete with one of our SRL officers, Officer Curry. But then even he can't compete with Pat and her service dog, Marty. Marty? Monte, thank you, Monte, because there was no competition with that one. Everybody wore the dog or the officer. So, but that was really fun to talk to third graders and answer their questions. And then went to Janine Solomon's listening session. She had a school board there, City, Metro, Washington County. Sure, I forgot somebody. But so that was interesting to be able to sit and talk to people. They do a kind of speed dating rounds. So that was, that was nice to be involved in that. So, and I'm proud to serve on the school board. It fills my soul. That's why I do it.
Your turn.
It was an opportunity to continue to advocate. We had the Washington County Schools Legislative Summit, and our own, Kim Strochman was a big hand in that from an OSBA perspective. So HSD was well represented, in fact, all the districts around Washington County were well represented, as was the showing from legislators. And it was a good, tough discussion. So the trick is, where are we going to get this $2 billion to $3 billion? That's, you know, that's where the road meets the road. We've done a great job of making the case that the need is there, and there isn't really any disagreement. The tough issues, frankly, are going to be, where is the revenue going to come from? And what does cost containment look like? There's a lot of people in the legislature that continue to talk about cost containment. That isn't my pitch. I'm all about revenue reform, but I think a sober look at adequate, stable and adequate funding, probably at the end of the day, is going to have a cost containment piece. And that's going to be hard. So we as board and us as a community need to really be doing some thinking about what we live with in that regard, or what we, you know, where's our line? And what are we going to say knows you in terms of cost containment? So I know some legislators that I've met in an advocacy session, they talk about cost containment. So that's just our reality. We'll get through that. But this is tough, $2 billion to $3 billion in new revenue and a cost containment package that doesn't, you know, break up the coalition that wants to do right by K-12. So that's going to be a thread the needle. But I think we're up to the task. And that's my comments. Thank you.
So I am getting ready to go to DC for national school board advocacy. I'm starting my trip with an equity symposium and then going into lobbying days. And really, the focus this trip is all about IDEA. Last year, the trip was really, it was a lot of topics and it was kind of hard to hone in when we met with legislators about what we were doing. This time, it's all IDEA. Our staff has been really great in helping me. NSBA gives you a homework packet, and you really rely on staff. So thank you to Elaine and Travis and Mike for helping me get all those things and they allowed me to have them on speed dial so that when I get there, if I need more information, they can provide it. So I'm excited to come back and tell you all how that went. It'll be very strange to be in DC when Ohio, basically, is in DC or closed. So it'll be interesting. This month, I've been focusing my school visits on middle schools and have been pleasantly surprised that electives are alive. And the students that are the most engaged and the least impacted when strangers walk into the room are the kids who are in electives. The kids who are in math turn to look who walked in the door. The kids who are in art, shop, band, don't look at the door. They're so focused, so engaged in what they're doing that it doesn't make a difference if it's the principal or a stranger. They are in it. And so I can't wait till a day when we offer more of those and kids can have more exposure to life outside of just academia. Lobbying stuff, it's really interesting. I think my first President's Day rally was 2006. And there were many years where we went every President's Day. And I would say, I'm really getting tired of putting my kids on a bus, coming to Salem and begging on a day off of school, like, when will this stop? My oldest daughter, who's almost 22, was, when we started this work, was in first grade. QEM, we were thinking today, was 10 years old, but 17 years old. So we missed whole generations of kids, all the way through our system, and didn't get it right. That should create a sense of urgency for everybody who lives in Oregon. So my kid made it to college and said, "I felt pretty prepared. I could have been better prepared. I feel like I've been successful. I wasn't competitive with kids from Texas." Right? So she felt like she had enough skills, we did, we did good. None of us wants to do good. We want to do excellent, right? We want to be the economic driver of the country, not just of the state. And so I'm just reflecting on how many years we've been doing this work and asking for this work. And I can't even believe that in 2019, I'm going back on President's Day to beg legislators to do their job, figure it out. We will be starting, Val will send all board members, PTO club meetings, start the first week of February. I would really love if we had two people at every one, so they kind of got different perspectives and not just one voice. So you'll get a spreadsheet that has confirmed dates and times, and plug yourselves in. And then also, OSBA, in addition to the rally, is doing regular lobby days. And their first Washington County Lobby Day is on February 26th. And I'll be heading down. And anybody else who wants to go that day, OSBA will provide some training that's that morning or before our meetings. But we will spend the day in meetings that day as well. And just plan on going down on a really regular basis this time, separate from testimony and committees, just regularly taking meetings with a whole bunch of people. The ones who cover the fringes of our school district are the ones that we are the most worried about. We're also worried about District 29 and District 15. It's all those little fringe people who come in and grab little tiny pieces of our boundary.
Can I ask a question, Fiona?
Sure.
Also, the committee work, can you help guide us on the committee? Because I know, I know the fringey people like the Boekwess and Thatcher, that have kind of like, their turf is really elsewhere, but they don't want a piece of us. But also the committee work, that's new to me in terms of advocacy. What committees it went?
So if you, I think through OSBA, you can let them know if you'd be willing to testify. And so if you want to actually be a participant, letting that team know that you want to be on that list. If you just want to track going to OS and.
I'd like to be part of the OSBA thing.
Yeah, so I would say OSBA. And I would say I start with Richard Donovan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm good on that list.
February 26th?
Yes, it's a Tuesday, I think.
So we'll be back in time for our board meeting.
Yes, we'll be back in time for our board meeting. There will be no traffic.
Do you have detail before you talk?
I do not. No, they have not released it. Just ask, you should have received it. I can't remember if it was in an email or if it was in a news feed, but you can RSVP for it. And then they said that a full agenda will be coming.
So just building off of a lot of what people already said, you know, the little slivers, if you look, you know, the Century High School is in, the representative, we think of Representative Plaine, Representative Solomon, who are very sympathetic to our cause, former school board member, former teacher. Wait, like, the Century High School is in the District of Representative who lives in Wilsonville. So it's a long little slice. So feel free to contact new Representative Courtney Nerrin about that because she's very passionate about education. Century High School, the Senator for Century High School is, lives in Salem. So spread your net out, look at the map. Hill High is Ron Noble, right? Right, Representative Noble who lives in McMinnville represents Hill High. So don't just be like the usual suspects, spread out. Sessions this week were great. Yeah, I got interviewed. Three of us got interviewed, you just can't compete with a golden retriever and a guy with a gun. They're going to be way more popular than you are. But we did, it was fun. I'm sorry to say, Bart, I never visited Buttercup Creek. The Creek School, right?
Yeah, that's my school.
I never visited.
I haven't either.
So, yeah?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You just had a better yak.
Yeah. Last year, at this time, was the first time I ever heard that school board appreciation month was a thing. So, I mean, this is like, this is amazing. That I, thank you for all, and all the kids who send us stuff. It's just kind of amazing. And earlier today, we realized that we will be there to hand Jessica and Samantha their diplomas in about a year. We're giving staff an action item to figure out how they can participate in graduations this year. Right, so I mean, we get to sit up there, I don't know if they're handing, or, but I mean, you know, I feel like Jessica would probably enjoy being, since she's a board member, being on stage just after her graduation this year. being on stage just after her graduation this year.
Can we also look into getting a court?
I am not advocating for the court thing.
I'll advocate.
I got your badge. I'll order it all the time.
And yet, at the OSBA Legislative Summit that Kim mentioned, we had nine state representatives there. And that's one of the reasons we were thinking about all the people that represent Washington County. And I don't know if we're here, so it's okay. We didn't do it, but the OSBA president did remind all of them that geographically speaking, we represent, in most cases, a larger area than they elected them. So our message to them has been, let's swing for the fences, take the big shot, and we will stand with you and get it done. And we're hoping all of you stand with us to get it done.
I also went to the Legislative Summit, and that was great. I think it really shows indeed that we were all there and ready to listen and also talk to our local legislators about how important it is. I think we all agree that being that important the way we did, it means difference. But really pressing for that, I think is important. I also had the opportunity to go to the Health Science Advisory Committee. And that was great. It was awesome to see all the different community partners that the school has to help make programs that our students can learn from and intern in. And so I'm excited to continue to be part of that committee and see what develops. We got like a mission segment done, so that lasted a while, but that was accomplished. And so I'm excited to see all the possibilities that come out of that committee.
Since it's board appreciation, I also wanted to appreciate the level of support. And Kim, also, that we will miss you along with Samuel. Besides that, the other thing I think that is really, I think really great about our team is that we all kind of collectively and organically use our strengths and kind of go into different areas, as you can see, like, you know, Mark and Martin meeting with our Representatives 101, and Kim Legislative, and Jackie's School Business, and Committee, and me with OSBA, and Lisa partnering, also kind of wrangling the whole group. And I think that's just, that's just a really good dynamic that happens organically. And we really appreciate that we have that group. The other thing, I had a couple of things on my list that I wanted to talk about or just mention. One, Lisa and I did a panel at Liberty High School with high school students, asked some questions about government and civics. And it was really great to get them to ask the questions. They were a little nervous, but afterwards, it was a really good interaction. And I really appreciate having not just us, but a combination of other elected officials from around the city, and also other people that are in positions of leadership, where students can ask them directly some questions. So I really enjoyed that. Also, like many of you know, that I got elected on the OSBA board. I will be going to their, our first meeting actually happened today over the phone. It was a kind of a fast one. But the next one that was scheduled to happen is going to be February where I get to, I guess, like more the official, the official process that I get to go to. I also had Saturday, I spent my Saturday morning going to Wilsonville High School to meet with the Colatacus of OSBA. It was a really great meeting. I was sharing with Lisa how much it has grown from last year till now, and having the bylaws and just working through a lot of the structure that we had to put in place. And it was a very productive meeting. It was just really good development strategy. And as you were talking about, QEM, and just a reminder to us that the current education system that we have and the model, it disproportionately affects students of color. So this caucus is really trying to put a focus on advancing students' colors needs and putting it at the forefront and becoming something that our own leadership, OSBA, has as a priority. So this has been a really good year for the caucus, and I'm super excited. I also wanted to share with you that you can become members of the caucus as like associate members that support the mission. And that's great. This is really, that's an advocate for you. You're more than welcome to come to any of the general meetings. The next one is going to be in Corvallis on April 29th, I believe. It's in the morning time. And the neat thing about it is because this caucus is a statewide representation of our school members of color, we actually wanted, at the end of the meeting, to have a listening session with that community. So we can bring back those voices from communities of color in those different areas that we go and visit, and hopefully share like a newsletter or a date and give information. But also great if you can get in here firsthand, experiences from students, teachers, and parents in the community that come to talk to the caucus. So I'm sharing that with you, and we'll be glad you listened.
When you go last, it reset everything. Did already. So just repeating, but I don't want people to think I didn't do anything. So we're just going to do a repeat. That's great. But before I do a repeat, I don't know if everybody noticed, it got pointed out to me, the garden that is draped along the back wall. That's from Arancel, yeah, from Arancel Elementary School. And the little cutouts are people, or I think they're people. But each kid did their own person, so that's all of these from Arancel.
I love it.
I think we should leave it up.
Okay.
I was looking at that earlier. It's really neat.
It's super cool. It's super neat. Thank you for Arancel Orchids. Okay, so yeah, in fact, there was so much stuff this time that I forgot to mention until you guys said it. And I liked that too. So we went to Butter Creek, which is really wonderful. We got invited to their great classrooms to be interviewed. I got to be in the classroom that didn't have the dog or the police officer with a gun. So I was pretty awkward. And the thing that was awkward though is they were interviewing about my job. But the reason I was there was my role was as school board member. So they had a really hard time understanding why on earth you would do something for no money? They did not compute. So that was interesting, but fun. And then we also got to do the Listen and Learn Session that Representative Solomon and a bunch of other people has mentioned. And I don't think anybody pointed out that we definitely won above all the other government agencies if like there was a competition, because we had a way better turnout. We had almost all board members there, which was a lot of fun. We had some really good conversations. And it was really, it was like speed dating local government. So we had like several groups come to the tables, they're all five minute Q and A sessions, which was a lot of fun. Let's see. Mark and I this weekend went to Susan McLean, represented Susan McLean's Coffee Chat in downtown Hillsboro, and got to hear about the committee work and some of her real priorities. We made sure to remind her again that we are, we were there for her, we have her back, and we are expecting a lot. And we know that it's a lot, but we are going to put our necks out with her. And we made that very clear. And she knows that. So, and we went ahead and spoke on behalf of all of you guys and said that. So we knew that was fun. The Legislative Summit was great. We got to sit with new Representative Rachel Prusak at the Hillsboro table, who is new in the county. We wouldn't normally have a relationship with her, but we really hit it off. And she, I think, is now a super fan of Hillsboro, which was great. And so we're going to make sure that we hit her up when we go into the mall. So I think that we have a nice advocate there. So we're really excited about that. Erica and I, like she said, got to do the Liberty High School panel, which was really interesting. And I made sure to tell everyone that they should ask Samantha their questions. And did anybody ask me questions? Or, okay, great. So that was a really nice one. Perfect with all of you. I was kind of hoping you'd get swarmed and then you'd be really happy. That's great. And then tomorrow on the calendar, I have a field trip. Is anybody else on a field trip? Yeah, okay, awesome. So I'll see you guys there. And then the last thing, yeah, the school board thing. So I didn't know that this was a thing, these gifts, when I started, just like Mark. And that's the whole reason I'm staying. Not the graduations, no. Every year--
You say you don't get paid.
You're right. I get your chocolate and letters. Every year, I take these home. And there's always something that makes me cry. I'm not a cryer, obviously. But it makes me cry. There's always, I'm good. But there are always, some kids have something that's so sweet. And I'm like, how do you even know what a school board is? And like, why are you so nice? And maybe it's scripted, but it's very genuine. And so we really do appreciate that a lot. So, yeah. Yes?
Can I add a little thing?
Sure.
So Century High School's leadership team did write the board sum. So I just gave a whole envelope, and there's a bunch of individual little cards. So if you guys wanted to look at that afterwards, can I tute in? Little plug for myself.
Is there a thing that's going to make us cry?
They wrote it behind me, so I don't know what did it.
You can't take that. All right. And then I guess the very last thing I'll end is, I'm also probably going on President's Day. It depends on who's going to hang out with my six-year-old, so.
She's sure.
No, no, no.
But I mean, I keep mentioning--
I'm just saying.
Did she ever make it up to him?
I mean, you guys want to listen to her complain on how she's so hungry and--
Sure.
You eat it all the time.
You know, what, you bring a snack?
No. There's not a-- Sure. No, we're not. Well, we'll talk about it. So maybe. So excellent. Thank you all very much. And we will see you guys at our next meeting on February 12th, which is a work session, and then February 26th, a regular session. And your turn.